Good evening. I have 7:00 PM on June 5th, 2025, here in Historic Town Hall. As we convene, please be reminded that we are being televised and recorded by Sandwich Community Television. Can we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while we're standing, please, if I can request a moment of silence for Patricia DeCanto, Gold Star weather, and a Sandwich legacy. Thank you. Anybody here for public comment? State your names, speak into the mic, make sure the green light is on, please.
Candy Thompson, 30 Kensington Drive. First, I'd like to thank Bud and Heather, Paul Tilton, Brian Schlegel, and Marco and his DPW crew for getting the bicentennial boulder moved and cleaned up. The Sandwich Garden Club already has volunteered to decorate the site with red, white, and blue flowers and American flags for July 4th, and is making plans for an even more permanent landscaping effort for next year. Which brings me to why I'm here tonight. Next year will be a special one for America, the 250th anniversary of the birth of our nation. Sandwich should seize the opportunity to tell of its contributions and preserve that history. We have a great patriotic story to tell and to build on. We're just a year away. Your support in that effort is essential. Not to be a Debbie Downer, but the majority of us in this room will not be around for 2076. So, this is our moment. In June 1776, just two weeks before the signing of the Declaration of Independence, Sandwich men at town meeting swore their lives and livelihoods to defend the ideals being laid out by the Continental Congress. In 1876, town fathers decided to mark the occasion of the nation's 100th birthday with a festival for present-day citizens and a time capsule to be opened 100 years later. In 1976, town fathers opened the time capsule during a three-day celebration and created a bicentennial boulder to remind future generations of their pledge of allegiance to this country. The federal and state governments are urging communities to make plans to celebrate "America 250," as it's called. Already, the state has handed out $3 million to communities and nonprofits to mark the occasion in a lasting way. Sadly, Sandwich did not get any of that money, and it appears we might be a little behind on the planning. For example, planning for the Thornton Burgess Birthday Bash last year started a year earlier. Now more than ever, we need to renew our allegiance and make a meaningful statement by restoring a piece of Sandwich's rich history. I hope that this board will collaborate with the CPC, the Historical Commission, and others to find and fund a suitable project to mark the occasion, to continue to tell the story of Sandwich's contributions to our nation's founding, and to leave something for future generations, as did the people of 1776, 1876, and 1976. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Review and approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. Town manager report.
Just a few quick items. As it stands now, I believe the Finance Committee is planning to meet on Tuesday, June 24th, to consider any reserve fund transfers that would be needed as we go to close the fiscal year. Other than that, our next meeting is going to be on Thursday, the 26th. And just for a quick update from the Recreation Department, excuse me, a lot of this will be on our website, the reminder that the fireworks this year are on Saturday, June 28th, with a concert starting at 7:00 at the Wing School, and then the fireworks are at 9:00, and then the usual traditions on July 4th, starting early in the morning with the road race going through, a picnic in the park around lunchtime. So, we'll get more information out as it gets closer, but just wanted to remind people about that. And I believe everything else that I had is on the agenda later tonight.
Thank you. Correspondence, statements, and announcements.
I just came from the high school, and we actually have a bunch of sports teams that are making it further along in the tournament as they go. I know the women's lacrosse team just won this evening, I would say a commanding victory at the high school tonight, and they're going to play Sunday at 4:00, I believe is the time. The, I'm not sure if the men's lacrosse beat Nantucket, I don't know if the game was finished yet. And then the baseball team is advancing as well, and they're having a terrific season. So, if anybody wants to see the, you know, our student athletes this weekend, Sunday is, you know, most of the games are going to be played Sunday afternoon, so it should be great.
Great. Thank you for the update. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a brief moment, especially since Chief Burke and Paul are here tonight from the DPW, but just to thank both of you, as well as Sandwich Police, Brian Schlegel, Facilities, American Legion Post 188, for just a really exceptional Memorial Day remembrance this year. Everybody really pulled together and did a great job. Paul, I know your guys were out there and did a lot of stuff in the days before, and Brian helped as well with a lot of the, a lot of the details, and all those details make a huge difference, and they certainly did this year, so thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few, please. May 28th, School Committee. The committee was addressed by State Senator Dylan Fernandez and State Representative Stephen Exiaros. Related to Chapter 70, State Funding of the Schools, a productive question-and-answer session was held as well. On May 23rd and June 4th, School Safety Committee. On the Friday, the 23rd, an evacuation drill of the Sandwich Middle High School to Corpus Christi Parish was conducted, and effective recovery followed. Then on Wednesday, June 4th, an evacuation drill of the Oak Ridge School to Corpus Christi Parish was conducted, and again, effective recovery followed. Thanks to all who participated, the next meeting of the School Safety Committee is scheduled for June 12th. And just earlier this evening, the final 2025 Sandwich Citizens Police Academy class was held. Thank you to the faculty and staff provided by the Sandwich Police Department. Congratulations to all who completed the program, and those participants are encouraged to advance into the Citizens Emergency Response Team training. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Staff meeting and hearing. District Attorney, Robert J. Gallibos, annual update to the Select Board.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you again for allowing me to come forward and give an annual update. This is my third time before you, before the board here. I know you have pretty full agenda, so I'm going to keep my remarks inside of 10 minutes, but I wanted to start off certainly offering my condolences regarding Michael Miller. This is my first time coming before you since his passing last fall. Most of you probably don't know, I worked with Mike back in the day when I was a prosecutor in the DA's office with Phil Rollins. Mike was a sergeant when I first started working with him. My memory is he was handling some narcotics cases, and I was in the office when he was appointed the chief, I believe somewhere around 2000, if I recall right. So, I know he was, it's a big loss both for his family and for the town, so I just wanted to offer my condolences.
Thank you.
So, five topics, inside of 10 minutes, I promise. First one I want to talk about is a new program we launched about two months ago now. It's referred to as CERT, or Child Emergency Response Team. What it is, it's a collaborative effort between our office, prosecutors and victim-witness assistants, certainly law enforcement partners, but also DCF for the Department of Child and Family Services, as well as Children's Cove. That's where we conduct our forensic interviews and examinations. And it's led by Courtney Scalesi, who is the Chair or Chief of our Child Protection Unit. This collaborative effort allows us to respond as a team when one of our children victims are either physically or sexually assaulted. It allows us to try to fully investigate the case as quickly as possible, and as you might imagine, try to provide the necessary resources for that child victim and their families as quickly as possible. Again, having launched it about two months ago, she's conducted two trainings here on the Cape. Each training had north of 60 attendees, so we feel like we're off to a pretty good start in spreading the word that it's out there and running, and I'm actually looking forward to coming for you next year to give you a little bit of an update on how the program is running. Also wanted to talk about, a little bit about human trafficking. You might remember last year, when I came before you, I explained how the office had gotten the grant for the first time, and it was just under $100,000. And we used that to run a series of trainings across the Cape, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket. Those trainings entailed law enforcement, those working in the hospitality industry, as well as the transportation industry. We felt it was pretty successful. We went back to the Office of Grant and Research that gave us the $97,000. We thought we presented with some credibility. They agreed. They gave us another $100,000, and this past April 10th and 11th, we conducted a statewide conference on human trafficking. We had over 200 attendees on both days. We had 38 presenters from across the entire country, including some local presenters, Detective Katie Parachi from the Barnstable Police Department, as often thought of basically as the guru locally for human trafficking investigations. We had Sergeant Sullivan, Mark Sullivan, and Dr. Abigail Judge from the Boston Police Department. We had a team from the FBI. We had all five members of the U.S. Attorney's Office's Human Trafficking Unit come down, and they were introduced by the U.S. Attorney herself, Leah Foley. And we had two representatives from the Office of Grant and Research show up on each day to just kind of check in on us. They had some nice things to say when the conference was over, and were already having some conversations of where to go next year, maybe a New England-wide conference right here on the Cape. And they've actually now pulled my office in to start reviewing grant applications by law enforcement departments across the Commonwealth to decide who should be awarded what, essentially. So, we're feeling pretty honored at the moment by that. I wanted to talk a little bit about fentanyl. You may also remember I explained when I first took office, I instituted a new policy. Those that are charged with trafficking in fentanyl, those are your business dealers, those are the ones that are pushing the poison for profit. The new policy was that we would try to hold them without bail under a very powerful statute referred to as the dangerousness statute. There's no possibility of getting out on bail while your case is pending if you're held under this statute. Having been in private practice for nearly two decades before I was elected to this position, and having represented many folks that engaged in that line of work, I knew firsthand that they knew the rainy day would be coming, and they saved up for bail. And often they would post that bail and go back to plying their trade during the penancy of the case. So, we started right away, day one, literally, of holding folks. Judges were buying into our request to hold these folks as a danger. Now we have some data to review. 2023 numbers show that non-fatal overdoses here on the Cape and the islands were down 20, excuse me, 10%, and fatal overdoses were down 7%. And the 2024 numbers came in. 2024 non-fatal, down 25% from 2023, and then fatal overdoses, down 35% from 2023. So, I have to absolutely acknowledge the more widespread availability of Narcan, and that's a good thing. However, I think you can draw a reasonable inference from our hard-line policy when it comes to drug traffickers and fentanyl, that it is having a positive impact. Wanted to quickly touch upon a particular grant that we received. Many of you might know, Cape Cod Healthcare recently opened up a brand-new addition over their campus. They refer to it as the Tower. It's for treating cancer patients. Last summer, I learned that they had to invest in local stakeholders to get the permits to put up that building. So, I went back to my team, and I will mention this, my team is led in this regard by Danielle Whitney, who is a Sandwich resident. She is the Director of my community programs. And we tried to figure out, what could we propose to try to get some grant funding? And the conversation came back to something known as SIMS, or Critical Incident Management Systems. What happens is when a law enforcement officer responds to an overdose situation, they go back to the police department and enter the relevant data into this SIMS database that puts service providers on notice. I will say hypothetically, and I'm not picking on any towns here, if someone from Hanover came down to Hyannis and had an overdose experience, when the Barnstable office goes back to the station, enters the information at the database, service providers in Hyannis learn of it in real time and can try to help out the patient as quickly as possible. 14 out of 15 towns on the Cape participate in the SIMS database. So, we saw an opportunity here to try to expand it in a couple of different ways. We start having some conversations, and by chance, I bump into Mike Loff, the Chair/CEO of Cape Cod Healthcare at the local restaurant. He and I happen to live near, near one another, and we see each other from time to time. This was last summer. When he speaks, I listen, so I start taking some notes, and literally, and I really wish I kept it, on the napkin. I take that back, that turns into a 10-page, single-spaced proposal that we submit to Cape Cod Healthcare. We meet with them for about six months. They pull the Department of Public Health in for another couple months, but nine months into it, we learn we're being awarded $1 million to expand this SIMS database. Two different ways we want to expand it. One, we'd love to get that 15th town on board, and we'd like to expand it over Martha's Vineyard. We've had preliminary conversations with the six police departments over there, and Nantucket is interested and participating as well. Also, the database itself, we see great potential there to do more than just overdoses. We see potential there for interpretive services, housing services, wellness matters. So, this again is another topic I'm really looking forward to coming back before you next year to give you an update, and if we've been successful in providing certain expansions to the SIMS database. The last topic I wanted to talk about is in the area of elder fraud. Every single month, our detectives across the Cape gather for their monthly appointments or monthly meetings, it's down at Howard PD. And I try to get to as many meetings as I can, and often, for a long time or beginning part of my career, it was conversations centralized around B&amp;E into cars, quick grabs, cash, change, things like that, out of cars, and trying to help each other solve whatever's going on in someone's town. Then it started turning last summer. More and more elder fraud, elder fraud, to the point where literally, all the way around the table, elder fraud, elder fraud, elder fraud. So, last fall, I said I'd like some data. Please give me your 2023 numbers and your year-to-date 2024 on elder fraud cases. I happen to know the Barnstable numbers off the top of my head, but the percentage that I'm going to mention at the end is pretty much applicable across the entire district. Barnstable had 393 calls for elder fraud during that timeframe. Of that, they were able to put a report together in 253 cases. Of that, they were only able to charge in 15 cases, or roughly 5%. So, I think it can be accurately described that elder fraud runs rampant across our district. So, again, I went back to our team to see what we could possibly do to help out, to supplement the efforts by our law enforcement partners. We came up with a plan. We talked about hiring two forensic examiners, we're thinking of a CPA that might be in the back end of their career, they made their money in private practice, and now they'd like to engage in public service again. We talked about hiring two more prosecutors and two more victim-witness assistants to work with the victims, of course. That total package came to about $580,000, so we wanted to make the pitch to the legislature to try to increase our budget so we can offer this to our law enforcement partners. As I sit here now, 21 of the 22 police chiefs have signed off on a letter of support for this, the 22nd is on a medical leave. We have 10 councils on aging that have signed off on it. We have Cape Cod Five has signed a letter in support. I've met with Cape Cod Cooperative, they've indicated they will support, Martha's Vineyard Bank, and we're meeting with Siemens Bank in the next couple of weeks. Also, what I'm doing here with you tonight, I've been, I go across the entire district, 22 towns and county governments. Town of Barnstable, Town of Yarmouth, Town of Brewster, Town of Falmouth, have all indicated they want to do a letter of support. Dukes County, County Commissioners, Barnstable County Commissioners. So, if there's an interest here by this board, we can get you a little bit more information if you would ever consider endorsing our efforts. We are looking to maybe hold a summit, it's a pretty big word, but a summit this fall with elected officials across the entire district to give a presentation as to, you know, why we really think this is truly important. I don't know how, but it caught the ear of Channel 5. Channel 5 is indicating they'd actually come down and cover it, because they understand it to be a rampant problem as well. So, that's my pitch. I really appreciate the time, I'm trying to keep to my promise, 10 minutes. I can answer any questions, of course, whatever you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments on that last topic? Please forward the information that you might be able to provide.
I'll send it through, okay. Yep, okay.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate the time, okay?
Just before you go, a couple things. So, I think the elder fraud comments are very interesting. So, I, in my professional career, I work in cybersecurity, identity theft, all of those types of areas, and I think one of the most significant opportunities to actually gain traction there is education of folks, right?
Yes.
Working with the COAs, schools, elected officials, school officials, government officials, there's a lot of opportunity for education on that front. And I actually travel the country and speak at conferences and do this all the time. So, if there's something I can do to assist, I would be happy to.
Appreciate that.
As a volunteer, because it's something I genuinely care about. I've partnered with the Maryland State Police, I've done some educational seminars with them.
Okay.
And I had reached out to you about this previously, so I'd appreciate if it's something of interest.
We will get in touch as we get closer to the fall, and we're trying to figure out exactly how to structure this summit.
A different question I have, though. You know, one of the things I see lately on the Cape, we're seeing a lot of auto accidents, which is troubling, but a lot of what appears to be firearms-related crime, more in the Barnstable area, not in Sandwich that I know of. But what types of proactive things are happening with that? And it's interesting to me, because as we move into the summer season, these things seem to be actually ramping up more so and more visible, at least to us as the public from what we see in the news.
So, it's kind of interesting. We, we had, I think it was five shootings in 2023, my first spring/summer in office, and we got those guys locked up in about a six-week time period and quieted down. There was no more shootings after that. Last year, last year was the summer of stabbings, so we didn't really have shootings last summer. This year, we already have five unsolved shootings, and that's between Hyannis area and Yarmouth area. We have a homicide that was with a firearm. So, quite honestly, getting them held, getting people that are charged with gun possession before it's a shooting or anything like, held without bail, that dangerousness statute that I talked to you about, can apply to those that are charged with unlawfully carrying, and we are doing that. So, by some groups, I've been mildly or beyond mildly criticized for my usage of this dangerousness statute, but I think it's really a powerful tool that when you talk about impact players, and we are like anywhere else, we have impact players down here, just like you do anybody anywhere else. And I, I think it's working fairly well when we encounter an impact player and try to hold them. We're getting some pretty decent buy-in from most of the judges, I would say. So, that's, quite honestly, the best we can try to do. Often, my office gets involved in situations like that when it's after the fact, when someone's charged, so it's how you try to go about it when they're being arraigned.
I wasn't worried about the dangerous piece, and I haven't heard the criticism, but, you know, it's certainly something I know that a lot of folks are paying attention to. I know law enforcement's out there doing the best they can do, but they can only do so much.
Right. I fully agree.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one. So, it's great to hear from you what you're doing for us. Is there anything that we're not doing as a community that would help or assist you? So, the, as the people that make the decision here, is there anything, you know, for the town of Sandwich, is there anything that we should be doing that we're not currently doing that would help your office?
Yes. You're that 15th town. I really hope you would take a look and join the SIMS database. It works. It helps save people's lives. This is the only town that does not participate, and we have tried on many occasions over several years, and for whatever reason, it's not sticking. And I looked at the fire chief, because I think he knows about that. So, appreciate the question very much, and I felt the need to be honest.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much, everybody. Try to enjoy the balance of your evening, I know you have a little bit of a long night ahead of you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, District Attorney. Okay. Liquor license. Change of manager for ACKL LLC, doing business as The Brown Jug. Tabitha Pinkston, proposed manager. Annual off-premises wine and malt, 155 Main Street. Seasonal on-premises all alcohol, 1 Jarvis Street. Ms. Pinkston?
Is this on? Oh. Yep. This is my first meeting, so thank you guys for having me.
I guess I should point out that a change of manager is not a public hearing, we didn't have to pre-advertise it, so we were able to get this on quickly. And the normal paperwork that has to be filed is, part of it is in your packet, and as you'd expect, all the references and the recommendations from the appropriate departments came back positively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Pinkston, do you have anything else to say?
No, thank you guys for your time. That was easy.
Okay.
You're the proposed new manager?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Who's the license holder these days?
It's still the same.
Yeah, it's the same owner.
Had it previously.
Yes, correct. His name's Chris, Christopher.
It's just interesting to me, because we've seen this before, and no disrespect to you, but when a change of manager comes in and the license holder is not here, I find that interesting. Doesn't mean I'm opposed to it.
Yeah.
But I would hope that the license holders, and we've seen this before, where the license holder sends the new manager in, and they don't come themselves, which doesn't make sense to me from the perspective of being a responsible license holder and caring about the success of your business, but it is what it is.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Make a motion, we approve the change of manager for ACKL LLC, DBA, Brown Jug. Tabitha Pinkston, proposed manager for annual off-premises wine and malt for 155 Main Street, and seasonal off-premises all alcohol for 1 Jarvis Street.
Correct, yes.
It is. They're both listed, Main Street and then Jarvis Street, so it's the. So, one's the.
It's written on each document. Mr. Hockter?
I had some more questions, but we didn't go to discussion, so you can let it ride.
401. Best wishes for success, Ms. Pinkston.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay. DPW and Fire Substation Project Update. Project team with Mike Richard, Kristen Koalit-Grio, whom I don't see, of Weston and Sampson, Todd Cacosta, I don't see Todd either, I don't believe, Taylor McDonald of Pomeroy Associates.
Charlie, I'll start off if that's...
Sure, please.
Just wanted to say a few words and then do a few intro slides for you. I guess my first thought is that nights like tonight underscore how difficult all of our jobs are, but more importantly, how challenging your jobs are in making decisions on major capital investment for the town. It will be a very difficult decision-making process around a shared-use public works fire substation facility at the current public works site. We're not asking for a vote this evening on the project. We are looking for a sense of commitment on the project from the select board and whether it's appropriate for this team to make a similar presentation to the finance committee later this month or early in July. I'll wait for the fund to go by. We last presented to the select board in January and the finance committee in February. Chief Burke and Director of Public Works, Paul Tilton, will review with you this evening the operational needs, safety concerns, and efficiencies gained with the shared-use site. It's fair to say that both facilities have been very well-maintained over their life. We had nearly 300 children through the public works facility on May 17 during our Truck to Truck event, and I was personally impressed with how well the facility that we have, while challenging, is maintained, and certainly the equipment is impeccable, and that's really a credit to Paul and his team. It would be also fair to say that the staff work areas, the administrative areas, and the safety conditions in both facilities, despite great efforts, are below subpar. The same can be said for the fire station and the work of Chief Burke with the fire department. It is not constructed to meet current personnel or equipment standards, and neither facility will serve the town in a long disaster response when a significant coastal storm or cycle hits our region. We certainly have contingency plans in place, but they are not designed to meet the needs of the community. I do want to note that Mike Richards here from Weston and Sampson will review the design and recommendations, the project cost estimate, and a code and safety assessment. Since we last met in January, the committee received a geotechnical study, which helped us sharpen our cost estimates. And as noted, Weston and Sampson conducted a high-level assessment of the buildings to simply bring existing structures up to code. And we want to stress with you that the safety investment, the code and safety investment alone will do very little, if anything, to address the operational inefficiencies, and in the case of the Department of Public Works, could make its operation less efficient and increase potential conflicts on the site. The entirety of this work is overseen by Taylor McDonald from Pomeroy Associates, and they've produced one, in addition to overseeing all of the works that's been done, taking close care with the cost estimating and the work that's been done to this point. They've also produced a website that's on the Pomeroy homepage. That includes two videos with our own Chief Burke and starring Paul Tilton that just gives a little background on the needs of the facilities. And when they're through, Bud will then recap for all of us the financial plan and the cost of property owners. And so just a quick background, the shared use or the public works facility and the fire substation needs have been in the long-range plan for over seven years. That plan gets presented to town meeting every year, and it was most recently approved at the May town meeting. And I think we've discussed many times that these are the last two major municipal buildings, our building projects before the town. Again, we have a working group, and I'll introduce our consultants, but we really are a team. Anyone that's worked with us in the Town of Sandwich know that we work as a team. I will not list everybody's names, but we have had a pretty robust committee meeting since 2004, and that is along with our consultant team. And we've got one member here this evening, well, several members here, but Matt's here from the finance committee. We've made some significant investments in this effort, and that began in 2020 when town meeting provided the Director of Public Works $25,000 to conduct a reuse and feasibility study. Again, in 2024, an additional funding was awarded to the town to move forward with a feasibility of the shared-use site, which was recommended from the initial study. We've got a consulting, JB Consulting provided a fire response study, which has informed the work that we've done. And then, as you know, we presented in January, we all agreed that some additional work was needed. We did that geotech evaluation and the existing conditions assessment. So the purpose for the slide really is to recognize it's not only been a significant investment, but there really is nothing left. If there's additional work that the select board or the community would like us to do in evaluating these issues, we would need to come back more than likely to a town meeting to seek those funds to move forward. Again, just the background on the project, the facilities assessment found that significant upgrades were needed to the Department of Public Works, that the facility limits our effectiveness and our use of resources, staff, materials, time, and budget. Again, just a reminder that when you all made the very significant investments in the fire headquarters and the East Sandwich Station, the town chose at that time not to upgrade Station One on Route 6A with the expectation that you would be relocating out of that site at some point in the midterm horizon. So that was a judgment call made at the time, and there hasn't been planned, there's been sort of planned disinvestment in the building anticipating a move or relocation. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Burke. There is a slide advance, if you'd like, or I can advance the slides for you. Just point it right at the laptop. It should work.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Heather. I'm going to do a quick review of the current status. So currently, the three stations, we have an officer and two firefighters at Station One. Station Two in East Sandwich, an officer and two firefighters at Station Three in Kettuert Road. There's a shift captain and three firefighters on duty, along with the administrative staff. I should mention, and I've heard from people, that in the proposal, it shows administrative offices in this new Station One. I'm not going anywhere, or the rest of the admin staff. We are quite content on Kettuert Road. That administrative office would be for the shift captain moving down there. So I think it's important for people to understand that the administrative team and what was built on Kettuert Road is satisfactory. We like it. We're going to stay there. So that may be a little misleading. When you see administrative offices, it's one person, but that is the, I just want to make sure that that is clear, that the admin team is not going to be leaving Kettuert Road. All right, some old pictures here, some of the current needs, safety and code issues. Higher and deeper garage bays are needed to actually fit apparatus. I'm going to have a couple of pictures here that go back 50 years, and you can see what the apparatus looked like, and they were built for the station at that time. Big concern is being in the flood zone. That's not changing, and a significant storm, and we've had them from time to time, where we have to move apparatus and leave there. We have to leave equipment behind. So again, the flooding is a key concern for me. And then air quality and gender-diverse sleeping. Air quality of a 70-year-old building, as you can imagine, you know, there's older stuff there. You know, that's one of the things that we think about. And then respectful, gender-diverse sleeping quarters. The other two stations have separate bedrooms. This one does not. It's an open dormitory style, so having gender-diverse sleeping areas would be, you know, would be critical. Selectman George probably recognizes both of these photos. He was a young man at the time. But you can see, the first photo, the addition, the addition is not even on where the old ladder truck, tower truck used to fit. So this is in the 60s. You can see the second photo with the marsh. You can see how it has not overgrown that much, and those are the trucks, and they fit in the space, and those doors have not changed. You drive by there today, it's the same upgraded, but the same style door. So you can see the size. The photo on the left is one of the rescue trucks that fits in that third bay. And for context and for my research, I like history, that is the first, town's first ambulance. The station was actually the Daniel Webster behind, and it just shows you the size of an ambulance back then. So, and this is all within the timeframe. Two years after this photo was taken, I'll go back, that station was built, and that ambulance right there went into that building. So 70 years is a long time. So just for context, I wanted to show some of the photos. Operational improvements, I think are critical. One is to fit the ladder truck downtown. I'll go into some more detail on that, but the insurance service organization rates our department, that's like a report card when you were in school. We, the latest report was in 2022. The maximum points you can get for an appropriate-place ladder truck, meaning a ladder truck within two and a half miles of your largest three-story buildings is four points. The town received .95 because it was relocated out to Station Three because it's the only station it would fit in, and we get partial credit for that. So getting the ladder truck downtown, because quite frankly, the power plant is a big player. I get it, but the wing school property that's now there, Leverage Lane, the nursing home, all Highview, Hilltop, all of your quote-unquote high-rise buildings are north of the highway. You need the ladder truck within that two-and-a-half-mile space to receive maximum credit. Another interesting thing that we've dealt with is five-mile radius coverage for residential homes. We had to deal with this with the folks at Phillips Road. You could all do this in-home right now. You can punch in your address, and you can punch in one of the two fires, or the three fire stations. If you are more than five road miles from a staff fire station, your insurance rating is basically null and void for fire protection. So the town sits in an ISO III rating, which is good. 10 is the worst, 1 is the best. There's very few ISO I departments. They're mainly big cities. We're at a 3, looking to get to a 2, but if you're more than five miles, the coverage shifts to a 10. How do we know this? The residents of Phillips Road. We spent six months, we came to this board for an intermunicipal agreement, where we're literally paying the Town of Bourne to respond to Phillips Road. And it has to be a contract. It has to be an intermunicipal agreement. ISO does not deal with handshake agreements or mutual aid agreements. So that's important. This town is 28 square miles of basically occupancy, 42 square miles when you include the base. We're like a triangle, and properly placing the stations and making sure everybody's within that five-mile radius is critical, not only for response time, which makes sense, but also for ISO insurance coverage. The other feature I liked very much with the sighting of this potential new station is the cut-through to Galloping Hills neighborhood. Now, people have been around a long time. No, that road was existent. I used to go down it all the time. That's how we called it Dump Road. That's how you'd avoid traffic. The bones of that road are still there. I've talked to Paul. What we would like to do, if the station is sighted there, is to have a gate with a transponder that we can open the gate and drive, but it gives us complete coverage of Quaker and Galloping Hills neighborhood. So think of it right now where Station One on Route 6A drives down 6A, goes up Chipman, takes a left, right, or goes straight for that neighborhood. With this station, we go right out back to the station, and we are in that neighborhood. So that's pretty significant, and I'm going to show you a map here in a second. And again, air quality control, positive pressure gear storage. There's been a lot about cancer awareness for firefighting in their gear. We are shifting to PFAS-free gear, which is helpful. Representative Zarros and Senator Fernandez have secured funding for us to start that, but the recommendation is gear is stored in a positive-pressure environment. There's still off-gassing that occurs with the structural gear. So having, right now at Station One, you drive by, you look in the doors, the gear's just hanging there. It is in the open. So having climate-controlled, positive-pressure gear storage will be critical for our personnel. Here's just a couple of arrows. Hopefully, it's not too confusing. You see the site location. You can go north towards the wing school. The other thing I want to highlight is, and you know, 30 years in public safety, I pay attention to what others do, and I watch where fire stations are sighted all over the country, and they always say, if possible, if you can sight one near a highway for proximity and quick response. Now, if you look on the Cape, Harwich Station Two, Yarmouth Station Three, you go right down Route Six. Don't go past Orleans because it doesn't count because Route Six is the only game in town, but having a station located where this one is for the ability to go east-west on the highway, for the ability to go north-south, the ability to cut through the neighborhood into Quaker Hills and still be able to maintain response downtown is key. Now, why is this important? If you live on Chase Road, and everybody assumes, and I'll just tell you, we've had 25 calls in 12 hours today. Everybody assumes the station that they live in, the district, is what's going to show up. That is not the case. In fact, 35% of the time, we have two calls going on at the same time. Your ambulance may be coming from a different station. Having the location here allows those on Chase Road, the ambulance would get up on the highway, go two exits, and get off. Okay? Now, hopefully, there's no traffic, but you can maintain 45 to 55 miles an hour, not trying to pass cars. It's a straight shot. Go the other direction, our residents at Phillips Road. So having that ability to go and utilize the highway to our advantage for response is key. The final point I make is, when I mentioned the administrative offices, the duty officer will be relocated to this new station. They have a black pickup truck. You've probably seen it driving around town. The ability for them to get anywhere within five minutes, a rapid-response vehicle, having the highway as one of their access points, is absolutely critical. That's the first point. The second point, currently, right now, at Station One, there's three people. If somebody passes out here and the ambulance comes, hopefully it doesn't happen, and they transport, and there's another call here, that ambulance is coming from East Sandwich. The staffing plan, no additional staffing, it's just relocation. If that were to happen again, the captain would be at this particular location and would be here within two minutes. So it gives an extra body to the downtown district. What does it do for Kettuert Road? That's why all of us are staying there. So during the day, there's a second call, we have personnel that can respond. So it's just adequately spreading out the personnel. But again, having the ability to get to multiple places, I think, is one of the value adds for this particular location. So then I get asked the question, hey, the station gets flooded out tomorrow. What are you going to do? Well, we have a plan. We exercise it. It's been for nine years. The Water District built a new building a couple of years ago. They've been nice enough to allow us to utilize it as our continuity location, meaning if we get flooded out of the station, we have a place to relocate and maintain presence in the downtown district. Last three years, we've done it. We've actually run calls from there. We do it twice a year. It's an adequate location to at least get us out of the floodplain and be able to respond to calls in the district. I always tell people, I want to be north of the highway and west of Quaker Meeting House Road. That's the response area. So we still want to maintain the presence in the district. Like I said, the Water District has been excellent, allowing us to potentially utilize this if we need. Here's a couple of pictures. The first picture on the left, ladder truck will fit in there with room to spare. The right, it shows one of our continuity days with the ambulance, Forest Street, another engine, and the personnel working out of there. So I always think it's important that we have a backup plan in case something happens. So the Water District has been excellent to work with, to cooperate with us, to allow us to utilize this site, you know, as needed. God forbid we have to evacuate. Final thing I want to mention, recruitment, retention, and housing. This station design, people have asked, they grab me all over town and ask these questions. I'm going to summarize it in two words, bays and beds. Remember those two things. Bays, meaning garage bays, we need four. Beds, meaning eight beds, eight bunk rooms. Everything else is very basic, right? And why eight bunk rooms? And one of the things, and this photo that you see here is East Sandwich Station and Kettuert Road, because when we did the stations, we did them exactly the same. My daughter's dorm at BU is better-looking than this. It's functional, right? A TV, a desk, two beds, and lockers. Eight of those. allowing us to, to potentially utilize this if we need. Here's a couple of pictures. The first picture on the left, ladder truck will fit in there with room to spare. Um, the right, it shows one of our continuity days with the ambulance, Forest Street, another engine, and the personnel working out of there. So I always think it's important that we have a backup plan in case something happens. So the water district has been excellent to work with, to cooperate with us, to allow us to utilize this site, you know, as needed. God forbid we have to, uh, evacuate. Final thing I want to mention, recruitment, retention, and housing. This station design, people have asked, they grab me all over town and ask these questions. I'm going to summarize it in two words, bays and beds. Remember those two things. Bays, meaning garage bays, we need four. Beds, meaning eight beds, eight bunk rooms. Everything else is very basic, right? And why eight bunk rooms? And one of the things, and this photo that you see here is East Sandwich Station and Kootenay Road, because when we did the stations, we did them exactly the same. My daughter's dorm at BU is better looking than this. It's functional, right? A TV, a desk, two beds, and lockers. Eight of those. That's what you would see times seven in the new station. Why do we have eight bunk rooms if there's only going to be three or four people there? The ability to flex to 16, meaning there may not be two beds in each of those bunk rooms. There'll be one and we throw an air mattress for those rare times that we need to flex up staffing. That's the first thing. Second thing is Paul's people are working a storm. They sleep in their truck right now. Probably not adequate, probably not a good idea. At this location, give them a couple of rooms, have their guys and girls crash out and get the adequate rest. The third part is crash pad policy. Those of you in the airline industry, pilots, flight attendants will tell you, they may fly out of Newark, but live here in Sandwich. They fly into Newark, they stay at a crash pad. It is a very basic, very similar to what you see here until they have to take their flight. What I'm telling you, and I've, I've said this for the last two or three years, I've said it to the finance committee, housing is outrageous. We can't find people to live here. So we have a qualified candidate that lives in Gloucester and they want to work here. They work a 24-hour shift. What this allows is the 24-hour shift, the 24 they have off in the middle, then they work another 24. They can just stay down here for the three days as needed. They can take one of the crash pad rooms. They can do what they need to do during the day. They have a place to sleep. They're not commuting. That just sets us up for success because I don't see the housing, and this is not a sandwich problem. This is a Capewide Fire Chief problem. Recruiting personnel to actually work here and be able to potentially live here is getting more and more difficult. So how do we set ourselves up with this new station? This is what we're looking at. It's literally bays and bunks. Just remember that. There's, there's nothing extraordinary. And if you want to see what it would look like, come to Kootenay Road, because it's basically pretty much the same thing is what we're looking at. Nothing extravagant. Uh, but I think it meets the needs for the future. There's more pros than cons in terms of the location, what it will do for response time, and then hopefully address some of these, um, deeper issues that we're going to try to deal with as we move forward. That's all I got.
Excuse me.
Mr. Hocken?
Would you take a question, please?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just gonna, I'm gonna jokingly call this my Mike Miller question, cause I know the answer to this. So, um, this is for everybody listening. So, you know, my fear is that as we're going through this process, if the six A station, if we got a really bad nor'easter, and I've asked this question before, and if the building got flooded and was deemed, you know, quote unquote totaled or was unusable, um, you know, would it, beyond the water district, if that building was damaged to a, a level that would be considered catastrophic, what is the contingency and what does that do to everybody's homeowner's insurance policy?
So, it's a good question. Part of it is if the insurance company is smart enough to figure out what's going on, they are. They pay attention. Um, it's the, it's twofold. The continuity plan that we have, as long as we have something in place, even temporary, temporarily relocating an engine, they're going to understand if it's a significant weather event. Beyond that, if it's permanent, if we just go to two state, and people have said that to me too. We built you the one on Kootenay Road, that should be good enough. And whatever, if they have to respond downtown from there, so be it. Um, if it's more than five miles, there's that insurance implication. There's a response time implication for that too. So yes, the water district would be plan A. It, a temporary structure would be plan B somewhere north of route six, west of Quaker Meeting House Road, to make sure that we're adequately addressing the needs of the particular downtown district. I don't want that to happen, um, but that's one of the things that we are constantly preparing for moving forward.
And in your estimation that that's, you know, as time goes on, that the likelihood of something like that, cause the flooding has gotten progressively worse, is that the chances of that happening get signi- more significant each year as we move forward?
Yep. Again, potentially, yep.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, present the DPW portion of the shared use site tonight. Um, and I kind of want to, the first slide, I want to show you a little bit of then and now, um, what the facility was like back in 1972 and, and where we are now in terms of the demands on public works. Um, so the building on the right, as you can see here, um, pretty evident, we have pretty confined site, um, not only internally, but also on the outside as well in terms of, uh, traffic flow throughout the site. Um, and as you know, the, the facility was built back in 1972, uh, 53 years old, um, and basically no longer meets modern public works operational demands. And I'm going to go through some of the, uh, the inefficiencies that we have at the DPW. I know you've all been to the site. Yeah. You've seen the condition of the facility. You've seen photos. You, you know what shape it's in. But I kind of want to focus on what's the impact to us in terms of operation and, and funding as, as well. So what has changed since 1972? Obviously the population is a lot bigger than when it was, four times what it was in 1972. I'm sure the facility was sized appropriately back then, um, with a little room for, for growth. Um, but over that time, 53 years, a significant amount has changed since then. Um, obviously we have, uh, an increase in service demands from the public. Um, the infrastructure expanded along with, um, the growth as well. We had some growth spurts, a big one in the eighties, which resulted in a lot more roads, drainage, um, and more maintenance, maintenance needs moving forward as well. Um, because of that, we've, we've added staff over the years. Um, that obviously requires additional, uh, workspace and meeting spaces for our facility, which we don't have. Um, and also required additional vehicles as part of our growth. Unfortunately, we have to store a lot of these vehicles outside. Um, and also we've had, we have aging utilities, uh, which require frequent repairs. And we're not in compliance with a lot of code issues throughout the facility. Um, and obviously as Chief mentioned, the storms are changing, they're more severe than they've been in the past. So we have greater emergency response needs, um, to deal with, um, moving forward as well. So collectively, when you, when you look at all these, these, these issues, um, it can be difficult for us to attract good quality, um, qualified candidates at the DPW. Um, it's a real competitive construction field. Um, and it can be a challenge to get, um, good candidates, uh, to come to the facility. And certainly a facility like this doesn't help that cause. Um, so I kind of wanted to break the inefficiencies down in terms of what impact does that mean, um, for, for lost time, downtime, and lost productivity. So I did a, a calculation and I, I did some research on this with other facilities as, as well, a similar situation. Um, and basically 30 minutes to an hour per worker, per day per worker is lost in productivity, um, because of the inefficiencies that we have. And I'll, I'll go over the inefficiencies a little bit throughout this presentation. Um, if you look at what that equals in terms of a day, that's a one or two lost laborers per day. Um, in terms of equating that monetarily, it's about 80,000 to 160,000 per day, uh, per year that's lost, uh, because of, uh, the lost productivity. And the range basically is that, that the, um, the one lost labor would be normal conditions, um, for us at DPW, the two lost labors would be during, um, extreme events like a, a snow event or a windstorm and things of that nature. So that's what that range is for. So it just gives you an idea of what the impact is, um, of that lost productivity and downtime. So this slide, um, major issue we have, as you know, is, is the storage of our facility, mainly for vehicles and equipment. Um, in the next series of slides, I'm going to show you, uh, existing conditions and where we want to be on the right. Um, and it's certainly a challenge each and every day to mobilize. Um, you can see this is our, our jigsaw puzzle of a storage garage. Um, and it's a challenge each day to get out into the field, get these vehicles out, cause it's so crowded. Um, end of the day, we come back in, there's a lot of backing up. Uh, when you have a lot of moving parts and moving people, um, inevitably you're going to have some issues and something bad's going to happen. Um, we also have equipment surrounding the perimeter of the inside, which as you can see, can be very challenging to get to. We have to fit in between the trucks to get to our equipment. Um, just that is another issue in terms of downtime and, and lost productivity. Um, on the right is an example of a recently constructed DPW storage garage. Um, obviously a lot more space here, easy to get in and out. Um, we, they can also fit their plows here. We currently attach our plows on the outside. So just more room to work with. Um, it makes it a lot safer in terms of the access in and out of the site. Um, so a, a modern facility will provide ample, well organized indoor storage for our entire eight million dollar fleet. Uh, some of the trucks you see in there are, are worth up to $350,000, those dump trucks. Uh, so not cheap. And we certainly want to protect that investment. Also, an efficient layout enables faster deployment and safer maneuvering, maneuvering of the vehicles throughout, um, our storage area. The, uh, the next slide is our maintenance and repair areas, certainly critical to our operations at DPW. Um, this is our mechanic, very qualified, capable mechanic. Um, but he's challenged with, with some of the, the confined space that he has there and the work conditions to, to repair the vehicles. Um, here it shows our, our portable list. We purchased those a couple of years ago. It was a very, very good purchase. Um, it helps mechanic work on the vehicles without having to, to slide under the vehicles. But it does have limitations. Um, for anything that we do inside, we have to move all the trucks out in order to find space, uh, for a mechanic to perform the repairs. Um, this area flies occasionally when we have major windstorms, pushes the water underneath the door. Uh, again, so that can be challenging as, as well. You look over to the right, this is a newly constructed DPW maintenance area. Plenty of room, uh, for the vehicles. You can work on, uh, several vehicles at the same time. You don't have to store vehicles outside to make room for these. Um, we also have easy access to the, the fluid hoses for the mechanic to use. So just, it reduces the downtime that we're experiencing right now. So dedicated maintenance bays equipped with the latest technology and tools will allow quicker servicing and repairs, minimizing downtime for vehicles and equipment, which is critical in our field. Next slide addresses the material storage and access areas. Uh, on the left is our current storage area. Um, real tight space and topography in the back of the, uh, the aggregates is really steep. We can't go beyond that. So we do our best job trying to fit in what we can, um, within the area that we do have here. Um, unfortunately, we don't have adequate space to store, um, a large capacity of, of materials such as aggregates. So we have to go down to, um, PA landers, for example, to pick up our, our materials each and every day before we go to a site. So there's a lot of downtime, waiting time. Sometimes you have to wait in line to get our materials at, at landers. So a very, really inefficient process. Um, so in that downtime leads to, to, um, lost productivity for us. On the right is an example of a material storage area. Ideally, you'd like to be able to store a lot of, um, materials, aggregates. Um, this provides plenty of room for that. Also allows real easy access into and out of these storage areas. Uh, so larger organized storage areas for materials such as aggregate, um, and drainage structures will streamline daily operations and improve supply management of these materials. Next slide shows our chemical storage area and access. Uh, this is one area as part of a recent safety audit we did for the entire, um, building that, um, really recommended upgrades for this, this, um, storage area. We're able to provide a spill containment area underneath, but there's only so much we can do with the limited area we have here. Um, and it's just a lot going on here. A lot of shared spaces. We have the loader right next to it, which has to back up into this area. We have stored tires behind it. Uh, we have the fluids. For the mechanic, we have, uh, flammable liquids as well. Just not a real good mix in, in terms of safety for that area. Or on the right is an example of a DPW fluid containment area on the new facility. Um, much easier for mechanic to, to use the fluid hoses to, to work on the vehicles. Um, so it just reduces his downtime and his inconvenience related to the, uh, the photo on the left. Um, so improved chemical storage areas will ensure compliance with safety standards and reduce employee risk and potential fines. Next slide, uh, covers employee spaces, um, and sort of focus on our, our meeting space here. Um, this is the, the meeting and lunchroom that we share. Um, as you can see, it's a real, real tight area. I'm a strong advocate of meetings. I perform my own training. I have my, um, each manager performs training in their respective fields. Um, we have trainers come in. If we have, um, a short meeting, we can do it here. Some, some of the staff has to stand up. Anything longer than a couple of hours, we have to travel down here or the cowl, cause we just, it's just inconvenient. We can't make it happen. Um, so it's just getting in your vehicles and having to travel to a facility, it's just a, a lot of loss and downtime as well. So not real convenient. Um, on the, on the right, um, is a facility that is adequately sized for, for a lunchroom and a meeting room. It's what we, we'd like to be in. Um, and an onsite meeting room, large enough for full staff will facilitate better communication and public works training, um, which as I mentioned, is critical for what we do in the field of construction. A meeting room with enhanced technology, uh, will improve emergency coordination and storm response. This slide shows, uh, one example of, of employee spaces. We have a, a bunch of spaces that are inadequate throughout, um, the, the facility. Um, here is, I guess I call it the de facto locker room, cause we have no room for a locker room anywhere else throughout the facility. Um, and again, a shared space. It's within the garage, right next to the vehicles. Um, we have equipment on the right as, as well. Um, the staff really can't change here, cause there's no privacy. Uh, our profession is, is a dirty, messy profession. They get, they get wet and they get dirt, dirty. Uh, so occasionally they do have to change and they need to go into the, the small bathroom to change. Um, some even go in the offices to change as well. Um, so not a real great condition, um, in terms of, of the locker room for, for our facility. Over on the right, example of a potential facility, um, with adequate sized locker room and toilets as well. Um, so modern offices, locker rooms, rest areas, and HVAC will improve staff comfort and morale, supporting productivity. This slide shows, um, the energy inefficiency of, of our facility right now and, and where we want to be in the future also. Um, our, our building is very inefficient. Um, in a lot of areas, it does not meet code. Um, the facilities department spends a lot of time, um, at our facility repairing utilities, repairing electrical systems. It really drains on their staff, the time and money as well. Um, we frequently lose power. The front office will lose power sometimes during storms, sometimes for no reason we lose power. So just a real inconvenience for us. Um, and again, lost downtime for the, the management also. On the right is an example of an energy efficient system where we want to be. Um, it's a DPW. So a, a new building will reduce energy costs and downtime caused by frequent repairs of an aging system, allowing, uh, the facilities department to focus on their core operations. This last slide is sort of just a, a summary of what I just went over there, some of the benefits of a new facility. Um, so in terms of enhanced operations, efficiency and safety and functionality, a new building with optimized storage, upgraded maintenance bays, and a streamlined layout, um, reduce time, improve safety, and speed up project completion. Um, in terms of cost savings and sustainability, a new building with energy efficient design, protected indoor spaces, cut utility and maintenance cost. Um, for improved work environment, modern offices, rest areas, and locker rooms boost employee morale, teamwork and emergency readiness, which is essential for the, those major storms that we have to tackle. Um, and compliance and talent retention, a new facility, um, will meet safety codes and environmental standards, reducing risk while attracting and retaining skilled staff at the DPW. Just, um, along the lines of, of attracting, um, good candidates. Um, if you can't tell by my gray hair, I'm not going to be here forever. Um, I wish I'd be around and if I'm fortunate enough to get a new facility that I, that I can enjoy, but, um, it might not happen. So at some point, you're going to have to look at a, a future candidate for this position. Um, and hopefully they're here for 20, 25 years, like myself. And the best way to do that is to really offer a good facility to take a look at. You're going to open up your candidate pool, probably get a, a much better candidate you would versus this existing facility. So on that note, I pass it on to Mike.
Thank you, Paul. So again, my name is Mike Richard. I'm from Weston and Samson, where the architects and the engineers designing this facility. Uh, I'm going to talk to you a little bit. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the design process that we've gone through so far, and I'm going to talk to you about the costs and how they were generated. So we've gone through the program and exercise, and the program exercises is really the first step that we start, that we do when we start this process. And it's a very important component of what we do because it's everything that we're building upon. So we've gone through several iterations, I'm sure. Paul and Chief Burke are tired of us asking the same questions over and over again, but we really want to make sure that we get this right. We've been through several iterations of the programming and the results are here on the screen. For Public Works, we have a little over thirty-eight thousand square feet of space. We also have a canopy space of three thousand square feet. Canopy spaces is equipment that is best undercover but may not need to go indoors. A trailer is a great example of that. We've gone through the same exercise with the fire department as well, and we came out with a program of about a little over eighteen thousand square feet. So after we get the programming, what we do is we move into concepts. And we've gone through several iterations of concepts with the operators of the facility as well as the committee. And really what we're looking for is we want to get to a program, to a concept that is really optimal for the operations and really suits their needs, as well as reduces the cost, it has the least cost impact, particularly on the site like this, where if you're familiar with the site, it slopes off very steep to the north. Ultimately, after a sit down, after going through several iterations, we sat down with the operators one-on-one, and we came up with this concept that you see on your screen. Some of the key takeaways for this, based on the feedback that we got, was the Knoll is really the best place for the fire, for the fire department. The fire department's there, shown on the south side of the screen. And the reason it's the best, the best location is because it provides the best access to Charles Street out the back of the site. Also, it's an elevated part of the property and police, I'm sorry, fire needs to respond in an emergency, and they don't want to be coming up out of the hill, being in kind of a blind area. It presents kind of a safety risk. The other thing that's nice about this location is it allows the fire, the DPW to be constructed first, the DPW to be relocated into their operations, and then the fire department to come in and be constructed and be moved in. So I'm going to zoom in a little bit, starting with the fire department. When we look at this, we talked about we can build DPW first, and the advantage here to the town is the cost savings, about a half million dollars, right? We don't need to do temporary operations. Moving over to the DPW facility, some nice features here is if you're familiar with the chamber now, there's two access locations or curb cuts. What we want to do is we want to reduce the number of curb cuts in that area, or at least maintain what we have now. And for safety reasons, we've changed the two curb cuts in this location and reduced it to one shared location between the chamber and the public works department. We have an aligned intersection for better traffic flow and safety. And what we have at the front of the building is we have the public works administrative and office spaces. And the advantage here is this is your lower volume spaces. It gives the town the most flexibility to have some aesthetic appearance at the front. It allows windows, it's low volume, it gives you a lot of opportunities to do what you want to in this area. And then to the rear of the site is the more utilitarian structure. It has the large overhead doors. You have very little that you can do with an aesthetic appearance in these spaces. This also is a gated access, it provides the material storage bin that Paul was talking about, it provides other operations such as your salt shed, your fueling facility and just general circulation. Another feature here is this layout allowed us to do three different tiers. So we have the fire department as we set up at the top, we have the mid-level, which is your administrative and office areas, and then you have your lower level with your backyard operations, if you will. Once we got beyond this point, we moved into schematic design. And schematic design is really our basis of design. This is where we start getting into some details of the design. And while we might not put everything on a plan, we start laying out that basis, and it might come in a narrative form, but the real advantage here at this point is we're taking that information and we're giving it to an independent cost estimator. Given the nature of where we're at, we don't have everything designed, costs are still based on a square foot basis, but we're getting into more accurate cost estimating. For cost estimating, one thing I wanted to call your attention to is the bid pricing that we've been seeing from municipal structures over the last twenty, ten, ten years, I'm sorry. This is the trend that we've been seeing. And this is specifically, this trend that you're seeing here is specifically for public works facilities of a certain size. We look for like-sized facilities, if you will. But that trend doesn't change, no matter what municipal facility you go to, police, fire, town hall, that bar moves up or down depending on what that facility is. So that graph is the trend line that we're seeing. So if we were to project out from 2024, the last round of bids that we had, at about eight percent, which is where we're kind of seeing escalation rate right now, that's the trend line that you see out to 2027. Fortunately, we've been seeing a lot more competition in the marketplace now. We expect, well, we expect that that trend of high escalation is slowing a little bit. And this is what your trend line would look like at five percent escalation from 2022. And your facility falls right in here, kind of right where we expected, expected to, maybe a little bit lower than I expected, but certainly falls in line with what we'd expect. Interestingly enough, we talked a lot about the fire station comparison that was constructed in 2017. If you look at where 2017 was and you look at to where we are now, pricing has increased two hundred fifty to two hundred seventy-five percent in that time, pretty significant increase. And what I want to call your attention to is this is actual bid prices for municipal construction. This isn't cost estimating, this is actual bid prices that we've opened bids on. So when we look at your facility and the independent cost estimator, this is what they came up with. Escalating construction to the first quarter of 2026 is a cost of almost forty-six million dollars. And then on top of that, to get to your total project costs, we have to include what we call soft costs. That's your designer's fee, that's your OPM fee, there's furnishing, there's contingency, there's utility connections, lawyer's fees, bidding fees, everything else that's going to be required to go into this facility. Bringing a total cost up to fifty-eight point two, two million dollars. As part of this exercise, we were asked to take a look at, what if we were to do just renovations, just straight renovations of these, of these current facilities, which is a nice, a nice idea, but you heard about the inadequacies of each of these facilities. It doesn't address the shortcomings of these current facilities and their, the way they were undersized and the way that they no longer serve the needs of the public. Chief Burke specifically talked about how his vehicles can't fit comfortably inside his, can't fit inside his station. He has to order special vehicles to fit in there. What's another important part here is this building, as we talked about, is in a flood zone. The flood zone sits at least three feet above where that finished floor is now. But if you were to raise this structure or build here in the same location, code doesn't just allow you to go three feet, you got to go two feet above that. So we got to build six feet, five, between five and six feet, I think it's about five and a half feet, we don't have a survey. So we have to considerably raise that structure. If we were to try to raise that, talking to contractors and talking to my estimator, just given the configuration of this building and the condition of this building, we don't really know that it can be done cost effectively. It likely would have to be demolished and built, built from scratch. But really, what are you saving by rebuilding here outside of the flood, you know, outside of the flood zone issues? Reuse of this structure is going to require a complete redo in its entirety, new windows, new roof, new insulation, new flooring, new finishes, new HVAC, electrical system upgrades, et cetera. Really what you're getting down to is basically stripping it down to its main framing, and we don't even know the condition of that at this point in time. Same thing with the foundations too, we don't know the conditions of that as well. Similarly with the, with the public works facility, it's, these facilities, these older facilities are very common for public works facilities. We've done a lot of evaluations of these for reuse. But again, reusing this facility really does not address the inadequate size of the current facility. This is just talking about rebuilding what you have there in place. The building has exceeded its useful life, vehicles are much bigger, staff is bigger, they got more vehicles, et cetera. So it doesn't really serve the needs of the operation. And really, similar to the fire station, you're getting into, you're stripping everything out of this. You get the main framing that's going to be left there, and even that main framing's going to have to be reinforced, stiffened, the foundations are going to have to be taken a look at, and more than likely those are going to have to be supported as well. So there's really not a whole lot salvageable, and you'll be spending an awful lot of money, really, you'd be spending twenty, about twenty-five million just to rebuild what you have, just looking at our independent cost estimator. So, and that just does not address the needs that we talked about that, of these operations that are needed.
So I guess I'll take over from here. Some of this is a little bit redundant, so I won't spend as much time, but I think, I want to stress what Mike just highlighted, that the renovation costs that we showed would basically be establishing the same square footage. So we'd be rebuilding something from when we had a population of five thousand people on the employee levels at that time versus what we have today. So some of the benefits of the project as a whole, and some of these obviously apply to both facilities, the recruitment and retention, trying to improve employee safety, not only in terms of the equipment that they use, but the chemical storage that both departments have to use, the air quality issues, gender appropriate structures. And then most particularly on a shared site, the response during emergency management, and I know the board's very familiar with it because we talk about it a lot, but you know, when a major storm's coming or a significant issue, DPW is the first department to respond, they're there during it, and they're the last department to leave. Public safety does a lot of effort during the storm itself and doing like last minute prep, but DPW tends to have a longer timeframe where they're actually active in the emergency management process. And then staffing during longer duration events and some of that ability to rest for people that plow snow for sometimes like two or three days at a whack, trying to get a little bit of rest in between and staggering the staff schedules. In terms of public works, as was highlighted, we're trying to extend the life of really expensive vehicles, that the cost for those have also ballooned since COVID. Trying to make the staff be able to work more efficiently, to improve our maintenance efforts, trying to reduce some of that downtime that spent every day doing the Tetris exercise to get equipment in and out. Our supply management, instead of having to run to some of the local contractors to pick up stone or material, we would have that on site. And then obviously just some of the regular changing and training areas. And I think if you look at what we've built in all of our recent projects, be it 100 Route Six A, the public safety headquarters of both departments, I think if you look, none of it's fancy, but it's all functional, and that's what, that's what we're shooting for, functional, not fancy. For the fire department, trying to accommodate the ambulance and especially the ladder truck at this location really makes the most sense. It gets the structure out of the flood zone, it should improve the overall ISO rating, especially for larger commercial facilities in the downtown area and structures. And then it will also include that improved response to Charles Street that we've talked about a lot. So now I'll just talk a little bit about the finances, just to remind everyone, you know, we've invested roughly about four hundred, four hundred fifty thousand so far to get us where we are today, which I would classify as schematic design plans. We would have to go a lot further to get to the ultimate construction designs. New cost estimates would be done along the way repeatedly. We even have plans that once we get the final cost estimate before going out to bid, we'd get a second one just to double check. And I know this has been on our long-range plan for seven plus years. It was listed twenty years ago in plans that we did, knowing it would need attention. It did not get the ranking from the boards at that point as really the last work that we'd need to do, and it's proven true, we've been able to get some of those earlier priorities done, which is great. And this is really our last remaining municipal building that we need to look at, other than schools. In terms of debt exclusion votes, and this is for any debt exclusion, so this is just what the laws are, but I want to refresh people's memory, any, for any debt exclusion to be put before the voters, it requires a two-thirds vote of the select board. So where you have five members, four or five members would have to support that. When it goes to town meeting, because we would have to issue debt, it requires a two-thirds vote, a town meeting, and then a follow-up vote at the ballot. A townwide ballot for debt exclusion requires a simple majority vote. So just some of the things that I know we've talked about that are on the horizon, that we will be saving money in the future on a couple of things. One is the regional dispatch implementation that we continue to work really hard on with two other towns, and we've been speaking with another town just to try to see what we might be able to do regionally. We've gotten two different levels of grants, we're going to get our third. We may be going out for construction on that project as soon as this fall, with Barnstable being the lead town, the other town is Yarmouth who's working with us. And then there, that's anticipated to save about seven hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand a year in operating costs, so that's annual. And then we have some debt that we're paying on our golf course property that expires in FY thirty thirty-one, twenty thirty-one, which is only a few years away, believe it or not. So that debt has been issued within two and a half. We're paying roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year for that. So that will be going off the books in three fiscal years in terms of when we do our budgeting in town meeting. I want to stress, I'm channeling my inner finance director, Bill Jennings, like these are all estimated costs, they're never known until we actually go out to bid and we get the final interest rates and what the actual construction bids are there. We are hopeful, as Mike highlighted, that we're hearing from other communities that bids are coming in more competitively than they were a year or so ago, so we hope that continues. But I want to be upfront and we want to be transparent, so this is try to show the estimated future tax impact if this project went forward. So I want to stress that it's based on all the actual evaluations that we have today, what our average home value is, what the total town's valuation is. And I'm just going to say this one more time, you know, in any debt exclusion project, your final costs and your actual costs aren't known until the debt is sold, and we have those numbers. And I want to stress too that there are some payments coming off the books, and when I go over the numbers, it's all based on if we did thirty-year bonds borrowed at an interest rate of four percent. We always try to be conservative and overestimate the interest rates. So I'll go through the numbers, but then I'll explain if the interest rates get better and we could do a little bit better, how much it would change some of those numbers. So the two different levels that you see in the shaded area on the spreadsheet is the first set of numbers is for if we had to borrow fifty-five million, and the second set is if we borrowed sixty million. So the two different types of ways that we could issue debt, and that's determined by the select board after consulting with town staff and our bond advisors, the board would determine if we're going to go level principal payments, making this up, that you would pay a million dollars a year for thirty years for a thirty million dollar project, or level debt service where you try to start with lower, lower principal in the beginning, higher principal at the end, but your debt payments stay the same across the whole thirty years. So if you did the fifty-five million dollar project, I'll do the easy one. So if you did the $55 million project, I'll do the easy one first, for level debt service, it would be about $310 a year of an impact based on the average value at home. That would be there for 30 years, and then it would go away in the 31st year. I know the board's aware of it, but just for the public's clarification, when debt is issued through a debt exclusion, you only have the authority to raise that money until your debt's paid off, then it disappears. So it's on the books, the project's paid off, it goes away. If you did level principal payments, the first-year payment would be about almost $390. Halfway through, in year 15, it would be just under $300, and in the last year, it'd be about $185. Then it would go away. For a $60 million project, you'll see that the numbers, depending on what you do, for level debt service, it would increase by about $30 for each of those 30 years. And for level principal, it starts about $50 higher, drops until a final payment of $200 in the 30th year, and then it goes away. When you run these same numbers with a 3% interest rate, we thought any interest rate today, with some of the financial uncertainty, it would be foolish to present anything lower than 3%. But if you could bond this at 3%, all of those numbers change by about $50 for each, each of the payments. So the level debt service at 55 million would drop closer to $250 a year, and for the 60 million would be about 290. So that's just to give you a rough idea, we're just trying to be transparent on what the cost would be, and that's what the estimates show. And so I think, as we approach tonight, we talked a little bit about what, you know, what we would like from the board, and it would be just some sort of direction, whether you think it's worth it for us to proceed with our efforts, to feel that there was enough conceptual support for how far we are so far in this process, before we advance the project and make a presentation to the Finance Committee. If the board wasn't comfortable, we really don't feel we should go to the Finance Committee until you guys are okay with it. We're not asking for a vote on the whole project, we're not asking to set an amount and a date when it could be presented to the public, we just wanna try to get some feedback from the board. We understand that you're gonna have questions, and that it may take a while to come to even a consensus decision on what we should do next. But we just wanna try to make ourselves available, and now that we've explained everything, I would say that a lot of this presentation is very similar to what it was in January. The reasons why we need to do them, do the two projects are the same, the reason why it makes sense to do them together, I think, are the same. I would say that what we have right now, primarily because we spent about, you know, I think it was 50,000 more, roughly, to get some better numbers and to do some test borings on the site, so we were more confident about what the site analysis and what some of that work would be, trying to get a better handle on if we just renovated the stations as-is and the two buildings as-is, built them to the same size, roughly what that would cost, just to have that, because the board was interested in both those things. So it has been money well-spent to get harder estimates where we are today. But I think, as Heather highlighted in the beginning, for the money that we've had available to get this far, it's really as far as we can go, you know, until we get more direction from the board, and we'd probably need additional funding if, we needed to clarify a few things.
Well, I hate to be the bearer of the bad news. I've got a lot of calls, and I have had not one person say they're in favor of it. Too much money, our taxes, people have had it right up to their neck with taxes, and so, and that's the truth, not one person. So I've got some questions, one for the Fire Chief. Are there any other acceptable areas downtown that we could build a station with sufficient runtimes?
Not that's in the floodplain. The water, current water district building is, that's why we chose it as our alternative site. Other than that, in terms of public property, we, two things, we wanna be out of the floodplain, but also the location for response time to Charles Street and the highway is, is really the key factor in that particular site selection.
Okay, we have, if we could make a deal with the power plant across from the old Roberto farm, where there's that big mound right there in front, where they put up, I'm sure that's quite a big area right there, that may be another area if we make a deal with the power plant. Just trying to come up with something different.
I'll just quickly add that, remember, for the ladder truck, it's two and a half miles to the high-rise building. So, high view, hilltop, you're pushing the two-and-a-half-mile mark from that, that particular location.
Okay. I'm looking at the, the site work, if we did do another Fire Department building somewhere else, and we did focus just on the highway department, you have almost $10 million in site work. Now, we know that where that new building was gonna go, it's gonna be in the hole. I maintain the property right next to it, and there's a hell of a hole there. So we're talking almost $10 million for site work. If we keep the same site that the DPW is on now, we'd save several million dollars, we don't have to put up retaining walls. We keep up, we keep the same fuel island, that's $1 million. So if we did do a new Fire Department building somewhere, have the DPW move into the Fire Department building downtown temporary, or across the street to the State Highway Department building, if some talk, they may do an agreement with you. But for the $58 million, I hate to tell you, I don't think it's gonna fly. There's nobody in town that's come to me and said, hey, great idea. We know we gotta do a new DPW building, we know we have to do a new Fire Department building, the waters already come up, come up around there years ago. So basically, my opinion is, go sharpen your pencils and come up with something a little cheaper, because I don't think it's gonna fly, basically. That's my opinion. You know, you can check with other people in town, or with the other board members here, that's fine, but as far as I'm concerned, I don't think it's gonna go, too much money. Thank you.
I'll, I'll flip Bobby's question a different way. So I agree about the $10 million in site work as, as a giant spend, right? And I, I do believe that putting a new fire station where the existing DPW is, is the best place to put it, right? You get the dual-road access, you get the highway access, I get all that stuff. So how do you find an alternate site for the DPW and save the $10 million in site work? Is my question. And I guess the other part of that question that's the same or related is, you know, was part of this plan to, to site these two facilities next to each other for some strategic reasons, beyond the fact that we already own the land, and I heard what you said about the crash pads, but that's not worth $10 million to me? You know, is there a piece of public property in town that is reasonably flat, where we could go put up a DPW facility that would make sense?
I would just add, we, we explored a bunch of sites, and I think it was difficult fitting the two structures on the site that's, that we think makes the most sense, but we were, we found a way to do it. And if I recall, Mike can help me with the site costs, you know, that includes everything, that's the, the new paved things in, restoring Charles Street, all that, it's not just the structures. But I think, for the amount of land that would have to be moved on any site the town would build on, the site costs are pretty significant, no matter how you look at it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to chime in here, yeah, the, the site costs are significant regardless. The, the impact on this site, I actually don't remember the, the exact breakdown on that now, but the specific impact on this site was, I, I think, in the order of, of excess of two, probably closer to $3 million, just dealing with, with the hill. So going to another site doesn't, doesn't change that. And if you go two different sites, now you have other, other costs and drivers that will drive up the cost as well. I'm not saying it would be cheaper, more expensive, but there's other things to consider that will, that will also push, or move that needle to.
I would just say, too, and we talked about all this, because we did look at a couple sites, I'm just gonna throw a couple out there. So we looked at the open field area on the Oak Crest Cove property, it's not wide enough to fit that structure whatsoever, so DPW wouldn't fit there. And then, if we build something somewhere else, we're then gonna have to build something for the transfer station, you know, they basically have a, a little hut right now, and they're able to go into the current building to go to the bathroom and do other things. And I'm sure Fire would let them do it, but they need some sort of structure, you know, because we can't move that. So we, we were afraid, too, that any savings we'd have by building, having to build something for the transfer station, that adds, adds costs as well. I'm just being honest, the only flat, and it's not totally flat, there's parts of it that aren't even close, but the only other site that we did look at a little bit was right across from the old Human Services Building, the School Administration Building, on Quaker Meeting House Road. We own a parcel, I'm gonna screw up the acreage, I think it's about 15 to 20 acres across the way. There's some huge kettle, kettle holes on certain portions of it, but there's, there's probably enough land there to do something. We didn't take it very far, based on, you know, what we had spent time with and what we thought some of the costs would be there.
How much acreage is required for DPW facility? Estimated?
Estimated three acres.
Because...
Yep. You know, just, I mean, the golden triangle land does exist. I know everybody doesn't wanna touch it, because we're gonna sell it someday, and it's gonna be a major commercial development, supposedly, but I still don't really envision that happening or being a great thing for our town. But I would say this, right, I, Bobby made some comments about the cost, I think people understand the need, I certainly understand the need. Folks are not willing to take on the cost. Folks aren't, aren't spending as much, based on a whole bunch of variables that we won't get into. But I think for any opportunity for success, like, whatever we move forward, if we're gonna take something forward, or we're gonna go to a town meeting and ask folks to support something, you know, I want it to be something that has support and will be successful, right? I don't want to say, well, we need this, and this is what it looks like, and we're gonna take it to the voters, and they can decide. Because that's likely a big waste of everybody's time, in my opinion. But I do believe that part of getting to a successful outcome with a project of this size on both fronts is figuring out how to segment the project into pieces that are more palatable for folks. And I, I get all the big-picture stuff, and the cost escalations, and all those things, but I believe that we are going to struggle with the mega-plan.
I, not disputing anything that anyone's saying, I just wanna say, like, we wanted to be upfront about what the costs were coming out as, like, if you look at every major project the town has done the last decade, and I think there's four or five of them, our, our estimates have been right on. We have not had to go back for more money. Even when we encountered challenges along the way, we found ways to address it almost every time, I think, with, we never had to go back to town meeting, certainly not for debt exclusion, we might've had to go for like 100 or 200,000 here and there, but they came in right on what we thought.
And especially all the new construction projects, all the new construction projects, 100% without question.
Right, yep.
So I'll, I'll ask the, just for clarification, or I guess the, the adverse point would be, what's the cost of not doing this? You know, as I asked, you know, JJ the same question, you know, Chief Burke, excuse me, he asked the same question, and Paul, if, you know, if you're building, you know, for, this is kind of a two-part question, but if you're, if you had changes in safety and storage requirements and compliance issues, you know, how would you address that? We'd have to build, I'm assuming, a separate building for storage and materials that would be, you know, considered no longer, you know, like, that we don't have adequate storage for at this point, is that...
So, how would we address that? There's, there's not much we can do with the existing site, in the facility, obviously. You know, we've looked at, well, how can we fit an additional building on-site, what's that gonna cost? How can we increase the storage area? Anything we do is gonna be expensive, because of the limited site we have there. So it's not real efficient right now, there's much, not much we can do to make it more efficient, without spending a lot of money, in my mind. I think that's always gonna be a problem.
And then, yeah, the other question I have, I guess, is more for the architect, you know, is, and this is a question that I got, you know, from a local, actually, two local business owners, and it's, you know, and I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm actually, I spoke with somebody else this evening about it, is, if you were to do just a regular, like, everybody's asked the question, what if we just did a big rectangular steel building? You know, what is the cost implication of that versus what is currently, you know, conceptually designed? And is there really a cost savings to doing that?
Thank you, Taylor McDonald, Palmer Associates. So we've actually done that in a community that, that had that question, and it ended up being more expensive. And the reason is, is those buildings are, they're, they're space buildings, and they're made to be space buildings, but what happens when you're building a fire station is you're, you're starting to specialize that space. And so every little tweak and change you make to that, that building, that packaged building, starts to drive up the cost. So we did it on a Cape community, too, we did one. And it, it came out that the building, all said and done, was either just as expensive or, or more expensive in the end, because of the amount of changes that we actually had to make to the metal, metal building structure to work as a fire station.
I'm good, those are my questions.
I got one question, for the chief. What was the cost of the new building you just did on Cotuit Road?
The one we're in now?
And when you're in now, and maybe without the offices on it, because we talked about we, building that, we said, let's put the offices on it.
Yeah, so, say 5 billion, and then a million for East Sandwich. So you're into 6 million.
6 million?
Into the Fire Department infrastructure.
So today's cost, 10 million, maybe?
Which is...
No.
What, what was, what was coming in under $300 a square foot is now close to 900 a square foot.
We have that on the slide, if you go to...
Yeah.
Have you, have you seen a Snickers bar lately? And that's our problem with where we find ourselves with this building, is we've just hit the perfect point, where pricing has increased so dramatically over such a short time, that we're sort of caught, right, with a problem to solve at a point where costs are at the highest point that they've ever been. It's gonna require a lot of, on our part, to make this happen. It's gonna take a lot.
I think what's hard, if you look at this, you know, what's highlighted in red and green is just the buildings, there's no fluff square footage in those. So, I mean, okay, let's just slash 10% of the square footage, but you probably, you know, it won't make sense, you're gonna hamstring yourself, and those numbers aren't changing, and most of the soft costs are just a percentage of the costs above it. So, you know, there's certain things that, you're right, probably could be cheaper on another location, but if, hypothetically, if you think we, it's possible to get what's needed for both places from 58 million in this estimate to 30 million, like, unless the economy totally changes around, it's not gonna happen.
But just for, and this is for, you know, education of people watching or gonna read this, can you just explain a little bit, like, what the soft costs are? Because everybody sees the building cost, you know, roughly 11 and 23 million, you know, with a couple other things mixed in, but then, you know, there's a number at the bottom, which is more than the cost of the fire substation, and what, you know, and that's as a soft cost, and there's a lot of things in there. If somebody could just explain that, you know, for somebody watching this to understand.
I defer to the experts, they could explain it better.
Certainly. Yeah, I think you're right, too, because I think people get caught up in the difference between construction cost and, and overall project cost, a lot. So we actually talked about this slide a lot, and whether we should split it up or keep it together, and, you know, I said, just keep it all there, because it probably makes it a better talking point. So, so the, the portion you see on top, the construction cost, that is the number right from Weston and Sampson's estimator on what it would actually cost to, to build it. Now, on top of that, you have to furnish the building, so there's furniture that's going in there, there's security systems, there's radio systems, you know, both buildings I'm talking about. You know, there is, you know, phone systems, and there's access... You know, there is, you know, phone systems and there's access control. And there's.
The mechanic spaces are huge.
Equipment, there's testing. So, you know, there's material testing and as we're building the buildings, we have to comply with certain codes. So we have to have an independent testing agent that's onsite doing, running tests. So that cost is carried. There's, when we go to bid, there's bidding costs that are incurred. There's contingency, obviously, that we're carrying. So, you know, contingency is something that you need to carry on every single construction project, especially these larger ones. Things come up, so you carry extra money is what your contingency is for. And it's for unforeseen conditions, it's for issues that come up with the drawings, it's for even add backs that sometimes the committee may say, hey, you know, I wish we did that, we have a little bit of money left here, let's add back into the building. But it's mostly to catch things that come up that may be missed, you know? I think the biggest misconception about any sort of set of drawings is that they're perfect and designers put out these perfect drawings. It just doesn't happen. As hard as they work, you're, every new building is a prototype, is kind of how I think about it. So even if they've built a DPW in one town and, you know, they've built all those facilities before, just they can't take that set of drawings and just transfer it to another town. It's a whole new set of drawings that goes together with, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the whole thing in it. So, you know, there's conflicts, there's things that come up. So that's why most of the time, you know, that's what your contingency is there for. But, you know, there's utility connections, so tying into, you know, the grid, tying into sewer, water, you know, has its costs. So it's, it's everything that needs to support the building is really, you know, what your soft costs are, as well as our fees, you know, OPM fees, architectural fees, engineering fees, you know, things like your wetland survey, you know, surveying costs. There's all those things that, you know, pile on, I guess you could say at the end, but make up that whole cost so that, you know, you can't just build the building without the supporting cast, I guess is the best way to put it.
Thank you. And, you know, this has been a two-year process and other aspects were considered. And where we are seems to be the place that we should be. And both geographically and elevation-wise. And I've also spoken to some people today that are in favor of this plan. So it has to get out there on the street and it has to be analyzed by the public. I'm fine with that. We go to thirty, slide thirty-one. So this is my point, based on my slide. This is where we are. If you look at the trend from 2014 through 2022, we still don't reach that point. So what's hard on the municipal level is if we were a business and we were going to build these facilities in Sandwich because we had to, we would negotiate the cost with contractors, with engineers, with designers, and we would, we would come up with a price that we thought was appropriate to get the job done. But we don't live in that world. We live in the transparent world of just having to be completely exposed to contractors. I know because I was one. And it's a really hard place for municipality to be, to put together like this. It takes tremendous. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Patrick, is, you know, the numbers we're showing you are based on Chapter 149 construction with prevailing wages. So, you know, everything that is put out in Massachusetts, you know, new construction for, you know, buildings of this size, vertical construction, you know, have to be bid Chapter 149. So it's, we have to follow the law and the law comes with its own costs. So it's not as easy as, like you said, if you're a private company and you want to put up a building, it's, you're going to pay less. It's just the way things are. So the wage rates are more, there's more steps that we have to take. There's a very robust bidding, you know, system that takes place for this project, too, based on the cost, any project over ten million, you have to pre-qualify all of your filed subbidders and your contractors. So, you know, it's a, it's a very extensive process. It's not, like you said, it's not as easy as, you know, stepping outside and getting some quotes from some people that, you know, may put up, you know, metal buildings. But it's, you just can't do that.
Absolutely.
I would just make one other note and Bud talked about this for, briefly touched on it, but, and I know that it's come up before and I've brought it up before, but at some point in the future, the, what happens with the transfer station long-term is going to have to be addressed or decided or what happens there. I think it could be a whole bunch of different things, but we're really already exceeding the capabilities of certainly what was constructed originally and there's been creativity in sustaining that for as long as we have. But at some point, that facility, the way it operates, who operates it, will need to be addressed. I don't know when that is.
And one thing I would be remiss if I, my dear friend Frank Penorf, he would get after me if I didn't remind everyone of this. And that is that when we endeavored to rebuild the main station and to renovate East Sandwich, it was always our wish to renovate Station One and move it to high ground, to exit two, where it can be the best it can be for almost any place in Sandwich. That is the prime spot. Fire chiefs dream about these spots. Being able to respond to the entire town just by jumping on Route Six. So that's not lost on the public. And so that kind of leads me to my next comment. And I think that, you know, we as a board are going to have to talk about this a lot more to, so that people can get comfortable with it. And this also might be, it might be, it might necessitate a more of a hybrid way of dealing with this. Because there are things in this that are, you know, from a cost estimating standpoint, troubling because you're sort of forced to take something that's useful and get rid of it. Like a fuel depot, like a salt shed, like a generator, like the paving all around. Think about what the paving around that building is, DPW building is worth. From Route 130 all around the building, dial up a contractor and tell him you want to just resurface it with an inch and a half overlay. And it would be half a million bucks. So there's a lot of value there now that we may need to think about using and coming up with a, what I'll call a more of a hybrid way of dealing with it. Whether it's taking the old building and using it for just straight cold storage and building a new mechanics bay on the back of the building and a new administrative building on the front of the building. Those are things that we, we haven't been able to do because we're restricted by, we were restricted by where we were going. Now, once we've reached the point where we are now, we really have good numbers on the land, numbers on what it's going to cost to work that site. So I think that will be helpful. But that's, that's my concern, is that it may require a more of a hybrid approach.
I just want to reiterate and emphasize, and Chief Burke addressed a lot of this, but when the new public safety complex was constructed at Catuah and Quaker Meeting House Road, there was never any plan to decommission the downtown fire station and the response times are critical to the entire plan. That is why East Sandwich was opened and staffed as a 24-hour facility as part of that same plan, so that we could be within all of those response times, mileage, all the different pieces that come into play. And folks, taxpayers cared about that, that's why they supported the project. They wanted East Sandwich open. You know, there's no consolidating the fire and our medical, emergency medical response to a single location because it will break what we've built.
If I could just add just a couple of things to sort of back up some of the efforts and I should probably preface it by saying, like, you know, when we built the new fire and police facility at the corner of Catuah and Quaker Meeting House, that was the first debt that we had issued for a new municipal building since the police department was built in the early seventies on Route 6A. So when we grew from five thousand people to twenty thousand people, we didn't do a thing. And so what we've had to do the last 10 years is get caught up on that. And thank goodness, the public and the select board and the finance committee has supported us to get to where we are today because now we only have this one sort of combined thing that we need to address. But don't forget that the first proposal that was presented to the public, which cost more capital-wise, but was far, far, far less expensive operationally, and we did the math and it would have paid for itself in 12 years, what we presented to the public was to build the headquarters where we proposed at Quaker Meeting House in Catuah and build one substation to cover all of the northern part of town on the high school site. And the public turned that down. And it would have been more capital-wise, but operationally, we would have saved a ton of money in a relatively short period of time to pay for itself. And the public said, no, we want East Sandwich staffed and we got that federal grant to staff it and we want the downtown to be served by a separate substation. So this was the choice that was made and now we're trying to address, as you said, the last sort of third of the three-piece puzzle. It's fair to say DPW, I think Paul would even say, has been sort of the forgotten stepchild for a while. We, any of us who've been in that building know it's not because it's not been retained, it's because it's too small and too old and we're doing the best we can. And, you know, a modern DPW is so much different in terms of what, what it's responsible for and the value of the things that it does and the equipment that it's responsible for. So, I mean, I just think we have to find a way, if this isn't the way, we have to find a way to try to address those last two pieces. One piece for fire and, you know, a bigger piece for DPW, but.
For the good of the public, it needs to be done.
Yeah. I mean, I think if you look at Sandwich today versus Sandwich 15 years ago, we've added so many amenities that are, that make this town as great as it is. And if you see how things are used and, you know, the services that we're providing today, and it's because of the whole community and so we, you know, this is sort of the last hump that we have for the town side. But my fear is, like, because I've lived it, like, we don't, I mean, that's the part that people will say, I can't believe the town wants to spend fifty million, sixty million dollars on this. And I want to say, like, no, the town is trying to build what it can. The private sector determines what the cost is and what they are going to bid to build it for us. And they forget that. And like, we don't make up these numbers. These are the numbers that the market is showing us as what's being paid for, for projects like this. And it's really hard, you know, because if you look at that graph, at no point except during actual COVID, does the line ever go down.
Right.
I mean, you know, the other thing is that, you know, the people that we've entrusted to run these departments have come to us, you know, addressing a need, you know, for the community. So, you know, I've gone through both buildings, you know, numerous occasions. And I would say that, I mean, the DPW is pretty self-explanatory when you go through. And I would say that the, you know, unfortunately, the fire station is not far behind, you know, as far as, you know, a need. You know, these, you know, it's, I think we've traversed the want, the need, you know, boundary. I think that we're at a point where we're going to have to do something. You know, what that ultimately is, I don't know, but I think that we're drastically approaching that. And I think, I'm fearful myself of, more so on the fireside, that there's, you know, some sort of an event that, you know, changes, you know, where we're headed. I'd rather be in, again, my thing I've said for eight years, I'd rather be in the driver's seat on a project like this than having forced to do something on an emergency basis.
The other thing I'd also add is just on the DPW side, all the equipment that we've invested in that sits outside, that is just, it honestly kind of breaks my heart to watch it deteriorate. Because anything that sits outside, that's, you know, those plazas that sit outside, anything that's sitting outside not getting used is rusting away and deteriorating, your parts are breaking or you go to use it and something happened. But, you know, I think one of the key, we could talk to each other for as long as we want, right? So getting the feedback from the finance committee, finding opportunities for public Q and A sessions, those are things that I think sound like next steps for me.
Yes. In that context, do we have a motion to share this information with FinCom on the 25th, is it? Their next meeting?
We have to work that out. A couple of their members can't make that night. So I think the plan was to do it on the 24th. If they tell us, like, hey, could you do it when we can all be there, we'll, you know, we'll do it at some point in July. But it was, we were shooting for the 24th.
All right, they can't come in then, could they come in sooner?
Don't know. I'd have to check with them.
Okay.
But I guess my question is, like, do you want us to go with this exact presentation? Do you want us to?
I think that's where we are.
Yeah, I didn't sense anything incorrect about the presentation.
Did you just need a motion to proceed as planned?
I guess the struggle, Mr. Chairman, that we have, if I can maybe speak for all of us, is, is, you know, hearing the feedback from the board and the, sort of the lack of, of support for the project as presented this evening. It's really difficult to present that to the finance committee because it's a project of the towns. And so we would be asking them to evaluate it from, they have a pretty narrow scope in terms of what their job is. Their job is to determine whether we have the funds to pay for a project like this. And the project would be a debt exclusion. So that would be the tax, the voters would be making that choice. So it's a little tricky to bring something forward to the finance committee without really getting a handle on where, where the, you know, decision makers are. I think we should maybe just, you know, absorb what we've heard tonight and maybe have a smaller group think about a decision-making tree that would help the select board have a little bit more of a conversation about this. But it's, I think, a little tricky to present a project that there's real clear uncertainty about to the finance committee. I hope I didn't overstep at all.
I agree. I, I think at the, well, but I think at the end of the day here, we've developed a sense of need. Patrick, you talked about things that we could save money on and keep, like the Fuel Island, things like that. That's something that we could have them do. That's a million dollars right off the bat.
I think we're talking about small potatoes.
Well.
Right? We're talking about small potatoes in a very, very big project. Sixty million dollar project, you save a million dollars, okay.
Well, do we want to, do we want to do the whole building, just the building and keep it where it is? We're talking nine million dollars in site work. Do we want to just repair that, you know, put up a new building there? It's for, what? Twenty-two million for a new building.
But, yeah, you have to, I think the problem is that, you know, all that site work, you know, goes together as the whole package. So you have, you know, two different facilities that are really changing, you know, they're changing locations. You know, they're flip-flopping. So, you know, like, Dave's point, like, you know, to save the Fuel Island, if you could save a million dollars, you know, I mean, you know, in conversation, it's great to say we're going to save a million dollars. I don't think that it's feasible on a job site of that size and scope. In my construction experience, that, you know, the Fuel Island that's currently in the middle of that with a volatile, you know, component that we're going to have to, that's going to have to get moved, you know, regardless because of location proximity. So, I mean, I think that the question really is, is do, you know, are we comfortable or uncomfortable with sending this to the finance committee saying that, you know, they've identified, you know, the fire and the DPW have identified this need. We've had somebody come up with a plan on how to address that need. Is the board comfortable presenting that to the finance committee saying that we're going to ultimately ask for the money to proceed forward with it? I think that's.
We got to convince the public, too. That's another thing, two-thirds of the majority.
That's another thing, two-thirds of the majority.
Right.
I don't think you're going to get it.
I, I think that's the biggest challenge, is, is, are folks going to support the, the finance plan? But I also think that if you take this to the finance committee, then you get feedback.
Right.
And, you know, we, we can talk to ourselves about it for as long as we want.
Right.
So, and I can go out and talk to people on the street about it. Most of them tell me that they aren't excited about it. A few of them are.
Mm-hmm.
Some of them aren't excited about the spending. But, you know, I think that soliciting outside feedback, and, you know, we, we've invested significant funds in getting this plan to where it is in front of us, right? So let's go find feedback.
Right. Back from FinCom and feedback from the public, we need a, a few forums as well.
Right, but, but to Heather's point, you know, the town meeting supported funding to, to do this planning. The planning has been done. This is what it looks like as the ideal outcome. You've presented it to us. We're concerned about the cost, obviously, and we're concerned about the public support for the cost. And we're bringing it to the finance committee to get feedback on what their thoughts are and how this looks from a funding perspective, and, you know, if they have some idea or, or better perspective on an approach for this that might be palatable and successful. I, I just, my strongest belief is anything that we decide to bring to any type of town meeting needs to be something that will be palatable and has a very, very good chance for success. I do not want to bring something to the town meeting as a test.
Ideally.
And I won't support bringing something to the town meeting as a test. So I will make a motion that the, to authorize the town manager to present this to the finance committee in the form that we saw this evening, and to solicit feedback from that group at a time to be determined.
Motion by Mr. Sampson, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Very nice job. Thank you.
Okay. Please, it's gone. Okay. All business. Henry T. Wing School Land Development Agreement, Phase Two Estoppel Certificate.
You approved an Estoppel Certificate for the first phase of the project. It is a banking instrument. It's been reviewed by town council and recommended. And the good news is that we are moving forward with the second phase of the project. They're projecting the closing on that to happen in the middle of this month, so that will allow them to move forward with additional units and start construction on that. We don't have any of the details on the, the construction activity, but it also means that we will be seeing an additional $450,000 from SDG Consulting for the acquisition of the next phase of the land. Good news all around.
And do you remember what the, the count was on the Phase Two for units that were added?
I meant to look.
Forty, forty, and forty.
Very close to forty, yeah.
Yeah, the last phase, and they got a couple more.
Yeah.
It was 140, 40, or something, yeah. Which I heard there was a, like, overwhelming application, like, you know, versus...
Oh, for the lottery, yes, yes.
Just might add, the lottery will be a live, remote lottery online on the Holcane Site on June 18th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion?
Okay, make a motion. We approve the land development agreement, Phase Two, Estoppel Certificate for the Henry T. Wing School.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, under all business, I have none. Anybody else?
Yep.
Okay. Business. Authorization to appoint Town Treasurer/Collector.
Yeah, so just as really quick background, atypically, put this on the agenda without all the backup in the packet, and I'll explain why. So our second interview for this opening was on Monday, and obviously, once we clarified who we were most interested in, we needed to do the background and other checks that we do. And so that wasn't completed, and a final decision wasn't completed till this morning that I felt comfortable forwarding to the board, so quickly got this out. So again, I apologize for the backup not being in the packet. The reason we're trying to get the vote tonight is our next meeting that's planned isn't until the 26th of June, and our hope is if this person, if the board authorizes the appointment, this person accepts, that we could get them on board. When the finance director is going to be in town in late June and early July, where he used to do that joint role, it'd be really helpful to have him help do the initial training for this person. So I'll just jump into it. That Samantha Moyer is our recommendation. We had several applicants for the position. We conducted interviews. The usual suspects were on the interview team, and then the board was represented by Charlie. We, just to highlight some of Samantha's background, she has a master's in public administration that she recently received while she was working her full-time job from the University of Rhode Island, has worked in the town of Falmouth in a very large department for about seven years, and prior to that, worked in the town of Dennis for five years in a couple of different roles, all of which required significant payroll, for lack of a better word, math, computer science, a lot of those organizational traits that are needed for a good treasure collector. It's fair to say she doesn't have exact treasure collector experience, and I just want to stress that this is true. In every town that you see going for a high-level financial position, it's getting harder and harder to find people with exactly relevant background. And I think what excited us about her the most was not only her intelligence and her clear, hard-working effort that she's clearly done and her dedication, but a lot of what she has done relates directly to things that we're working on in the treasure and collector's office. And we think she'll pick up on things really quickly, and we look forward to working for her as a department head position. I need to get the board's authorization to make the appointment.
If I may agree, she made great responses to the questions that she was asked, and the background checks came back appropriately. I'm fine.
I would move that we authorize the town manager to appoint Samantha Moyer as the Town Treasurer/Collector.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sampson, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I have none at this point.
Charlie, I just got one, this is...
Sure, please.
But I, you and I exchanged some text messages on this, but in the last couple of days, I got a couple of calls about the intersection of Chase Road and the Service Road where we had that, you know, significant accident resulting in the injury of a student in our school district that's, you know, having a tough go at it. Is there any update? Because I know there was another secondary, you know, fender-bender type thing, and people have been asking about that.
Yeah, I guess what's hard is, like, some of the accidents, or at least one of the big ones, had nothing to do with site distances or anything, so the DPW and police, I spoke to both Paul and to Chief Keane today, and they had a quick list of things that they wanted to go out there together and look at. Couple of the points that they made is the new shared use path that's going in. So some of that project has not, the project has not been turned over to the town yet, so a lot of that's still state overseen. So one of the things that Chief Keane pointed out, if you're coming from exit, the old exit three, headed towards exit four, heading towards Barnstable, and you come to the stop, the new crosswalk that went in for the pedestrian accessibility forced the stop line to be further back. You, you have to go forward to be able to see, so they're going to look at that. There's some, vegetation, we looked, was pretty well-done, but they're going to go back and look to see if there's, like, any bigger things that could come down, sort of from that same area that I talked about. If you look right, there's, it's sort of like a sloped hill that comes down. There's a large utility pole there, so there's not, if some of that's our property, we might be able to look at carving that back out, back out a lot further. But I think the thing that both of them said is excessive speed is the common denominator, especially, you know, when you come around that corner, heading towards the, the off-ramp or the on-ramp, depending on where you're turning on both sides, the site distances are great looking that way. It's just, it's really just looking back towards, you know, Lawrence Pond areas. So that's something that we need to look at, and there was a couple of areas that I know there's some signage there where Chief Keane wanted to, to go out and look just to see if it made sense to pull those further back from the stop signs and to make them a little bit more visible to let people know. There's not, especially if you're coming on Service Road from Barnstable towards Sandwich, if you drive it, it's a quick, you know, zigzag, and then you're right on the stop sign, so. They're going to, so the short answer is they're going to look at that to see if there's anything we can do that makes sense. And the biggest thing is, you know, we should all drive slower, which we all know, but we all drive fast.
Yep. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Any closing remarks? Okay, just...
I was gonna, I was just going to mention this under unanticipated new business, but, you know, do we need to be thinking about a formal approach to the America 250 item? So I guess the CPC is taking some responsibility there. Is that, are they, are they the leaders? I assume that the Fourth of July Parade next year is the time that this happens?
Right.
Do we need a call for volunteers? Do we need to assign the constable? Okay. I don't know. It's a question, so, so we don't have to answer it now.
I understand it's a question, and it's something that we'll need to consider going forward seriously. Yes?
I, I just have one thing, I meant to mention this earlier. I, I wanted to thank Dave Sampson for taking on the role of organizing the, and working with the American Legion on, on the Memorial Day celebration. It was a really great day, and it worked out real smoothly, and he deserves a lot of credit for taking that on.
Thank you. Thank you. Proud of what we did, and a lot of folks, a lot of folks contributed to doing that.
It was a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if, if we have any thoughts on outreach to the public concerning the 250th, we can discuss them at the next meeting, if that's at all possible. I just have a couple of going forward. On Monday, June 9th, at 11 o'clock, the, the Fire Department will be presenting Safer with 9/11 as a lunch and learn event at the Sandwich Center for Active Living. Please call the center at 508-888-4737 to reserve your spot. On Friday, June 13th, the, the Fire Department will be hosting a Drive and Drop Unwanted Medications Event at the Catuah Avenue Road, excuse me, Fire Headquarters from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Sharps will also be accepted. Then on Flag Day, Saturday, June 14th, at the Center for Active Living, there will be a Flag Day Ceremony at, at 9:00 in conjunction with the American Legion as well. Anybody else?
We were talking...
Please.
...to lie whatnot. How are we doing on the bandstand?
Our contract has been awarded. Materials were supposed to be delivered today. They were not. They're on their way for tomorrow. I didn't want to give any reports until I could say there was materials on the ground, but that should happen tomorrow. The contracting team's been great. They actually arrived today ready to work, but the materials...
They're going to be done for the fireworks?
Yeah, it should take a, a couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Police continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe and conditions in the Middle East as overall threats to world peace. In your thoughts and prayers?
Make a motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion adjourned by Mr. George, second, but, uh, Mr. Hockter, our next meeting will be Thursday, June 26th at 7:00 p.m. here in historic Town Hall. Have good evenings. Thank you.